We open with public comment. In case you're not aware of it, for public comment, if you wish to speak, please come to that microphone. It's connected to the TV so that people at home can hear what you're saying. It's not actually a microphone for the room, but it is for that purpose. So you have to go there, and the first thing that you would say would be your name, and then what you want to speak on, and then whatever it is that you want to say. The public comment period is so you can speak on any topic that you would like that's not on the agenda, just something you want to bring to our attention. So that time is now. Is there anyone with something they wish to bring to our attention? No. In that case, we'll go forward. Follow the minutes.
Yeah, I recommend minutes of November 26th. That's correct.
Any comments? A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, first on our agenda, our two approval not required. And the first of these is for Summerfield Park Realty Trust. Kevin Andrade is the trustee. It's a plan of land to create four lots at 160 Trotting Park Road. And the plans are now up there.
I'm going to recuse myself for this hearing.
John is leaving. John duly. And who is here representing that plan?
Oh, sure.
Jed, you want to speak on it?
Well, yes. For the record, Jed Cornock Town Planner. I recommend endorsement of the plan as all four of these lots have the requisite frontage on a public way. So I recommend your endorsement.
Is there any discussion from the board on that?
What is the required frontage?
A hundred... I'm sorry, 200 feet because it's within the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. And each one of them has the requisite frontage.
Okay.
They've got axles without frontage. They seem to meet the requirements.
Another question. The frontage requirement is within the Water Resource Protection District? I was unaware of that.
Yeah, so they're both within the agricultural district as well as within the overlay district.
Right.
The overlay district has certain requirements for residential density. So you have to have a certain lot size and a certain frontage. The frontage is 200 feet.
So increase it from 150 to 200? Is that...
Let me just make sure. I apologize. It's 150 feet.
Yeah.
That's what I thought when you said that because I'm very familiar with this piece of land, and what you said wasn't driving with my understanding.
Trying to remember too many facts.
So they... And those lots are bigger than 150?
Slightly, yes. Each one of them's roughly 155 to 160.
Okay.
Is lot four... That shows 129. Does that include the one below it? No?
No.
The only ones we're talking about inside the black lines.
Yeah, right. So this is on the road.
Yeah.
129 feet. 150...
There's an additional 22.86 feet just at the southern end of the lot itself.
That corner? Can you see something right there?
See, there's a bound there.
Okay. Okay.
So added together, they make the requisite...
All right, I'm sorry. I remembered something slightly different, but I'm okay.
So five, you all set?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to endorse without regard to the buildability.
Second.
Or zoning components.
We've got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Moving on. The next one. The applicant is Joshua O'Brien. A plan of land to combine two lots into one lot at 22 Deer Pond Road. And here we're looking at that plan on the screen. John's back. Are there any... Who is here to speak for this applicant?
I don't believe anyone's here for that either.
Do you want to say what...
Really the same comments, combining two lots, requisite frontage. Deer Pond Road was created under subdivision control. So it's one of the categories that allows for your endorsement.
Any comments or questions from the board? No. Do we have a motion?
I move endorsement without regard to buildability or zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's approved. Next we have, this is a little different, a public hearing. And this is a public hearing, I think this is our fourth public hearing. A definitive plan... Stephen Marsh is the applicant. A definitive plan application to create three lot subdivision at Zero Old Barnstable Road. And Mr. Marsh has requested a continuance to February 11th. He's waiting to get further input from the 300 Committee following up on conservation land that was discussed at the last meeting. Is there any question or comment from the board?
No.
Madam Chair, finally, he's also asking for a decision deadline extension.
Oh.
So continuance to February 11th and a decision deadline extension to February 28th of 2025.
To the 28th. Okay. Not hearing any comments or questions because we have a motion.
I move we grant the extensions.
The continuance to February 11th and the extension to February 28th?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's approved. Mr. Marsh is all set until the 11th. Moving on to a public meeting. This has slightly different rules. It's a little more open. The applicant here is Kevin Clower. There he is. On behalf of Cape Cod Y up on Brick Hill Road. Mr. Clower, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm with ours. For the record, Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in town, and I'm before you tonight representing the Cape Cod YMCA. As at our last hearing, we are joined by what is effectively our full team. With us tonight, we have Stacy Pugh, the president and CEO of the YMCA Cape Cod. We have Stu...
Mr. Clower, could I ask you to speak up so everyone can hear you?
Of course. As at the last meeting, we have effectively our whole team with us tonight. So with us, we have Stacy Pugh, the president and CEO of the YMCA Cape Cod. We have Rick Fanuccio, who is the project manager with Clear Path Advisors. Stu Clark, the civil engineer with Greensale Environmental. And Jen Hockerman, who is the architect with SV Design, as well as Emily Buck, the traffic consultant with Bowman Consulting. We made our initial presentation to the board on this matter on November 12th. We are back before you tonight, having had the opportunity to review and address both the engineering referral and the peer review for the stormwater management. Before we get into the details of what we've done, I wanted to offer a brief recap. So as you know, we are seeking site plan review approval for the proposed development of a portion of 485 Brick Hill Road. We have also submitted applications for a special permit from this board, which would allow for parking in the front yard pursuant to 240 14.1I5, which we expect to be backed before you in a few weeks on. We've also submitted the special permit to the zoning board of appeals under three different sections of the bylaw. It is a private club, not-for-profit, with 246.1B for lot coverage in excess of 15% in the Water Resource Protection District under 247.7B4E, and for a parking reduction and shared parking under 240 14.1F3. We are also currently before the Board of Health. We are returning there next week. And we have already received approval from the Cape Cod Commission, which was unanimous approval as a development of regional impact. So this proposed development is on a 6.13 acre parcel, which is currently a portion of 485 Brick Hill Road, which will be 487 Brick Hill once the A&R plan has been recorded at the registry. At the risk of stepping on other people's toes, I can say that we've used the last few weeks to revise the plans, again largely in response to comments from this board and the engineering referral. Those changes have been enumerated in a letter to the board from Greensale, which was dated on January 2nd. So there's obviously a lot of information to discuss. I'd like to hand it off to some of the other team members. And following their presentation, I and them would be happy to address any questions that the board may have. So I'd like to ask Stu Clark to come up from Greensale to just go over some of the changes that were made to the site plans.
(laughter) (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Madam Chair, board member Stuart Clark with Greensale Environmental. As Kevin said, we have made a few changes to the project as we, you know, flesh out the design and go from a schematic level of design into design development and into construction drawings. I'm just going to try to find where... Okay. The civil site stuff's not really exciting, but I'm going to run through it because that's my area of expertise. One of the biggest changes we did, we lowered the finished grade from 58.5 to 55.7. To do that, we had to do some associated grading changes around the building to accommodate the lower, you know, lower grade. The basement access scares were also moved from one side of the one area of the building to another, which resulted in me having to move parking lot aisle F, which is the one that goes, has the EV parking in it. I had to move it over another five feet just to keep ADA access to that aisle and the associated grading with that. Also, we decided to... The first design had a flat terrain all the way around the building, but in the back now, we're going to hold it up a little bit so we don't have so much cut and fill. So that was another change, which necessitated us putting some concrete stairwells to come out for access. Those have been added to the site plan in front of you. Also, we've decided that where there's not going to be any propane there, we're going to use natural gas. So the propane yard has been removed from the plan set. Also, you know, talking with the MEP people as they're going through their process, the location of the sewer pipe coming out of the building was moved approximately 20 feet. So I had to shift the septic system 20 feet to the south to accommodate that. Nothing else has changed on the septic system, other than its, you know, its location. And as I said, we did add a natural gas line to the plan set that you'll see along there runs up the main access drive. Also, I worked with Matt Lanen from the Water Department about looping the water through that property, as that was one of his concerns in his staff notes to this board. We did, and we looped the water down through the access drive. I sent him plans of that, and I got an email from him saying that, you know, that was acceptable. All right. Item number 10. I had oil grit separators on the system to remove sediments before it went into the infiltration. I switched those out for hydrodynamic separators. They get a little bit better TSS removal. They do a better job. They're a little more expensive, but I think it provides a better system, whereas we're infiltrating everything out of the ground, and we can't really see what's going on there. So we want it as clean as we can before we put it underground. So those were switched out. We had an attenuation pond. I wonder if we have a map here? I'm just going to blow through some to see if we can get a map slide.
Stu, if you go to the... The next tab over where we are is the site plan. (inaudible)
Oh, site plan. This one here?
Almost now.
Oh, that's not us.
I think it's the third tap.
The third one?
From the left.
Here?
Either that one or the next one.
Nope.
Was it on the screen?
There we go.
All right. So we can see what I'm talking about. All right, this might be one of the best ones. So we ran the water line down the road here. Very simple. We eliminated... We had a detention pond down here. We eliminated that. And there's a cross pipe here to take the water that comes off of Brick Hill Road. It comes off the two catch basins here and just let it go the way it's going now. What else... Oh, this is where we moved the staircase. Used to be in this location, and now it's over here. So I had to push this towards this property line five feet. Nothing drastic. And over here is where we left to fill to, you know, minimize the cuts and fills that we had to do on this site. Also, by lowering this, we did not need that retaining wall that was shown here before. So that's been eliminated. Then in the parking lot, we used to have raised speed humps on each one of these, but now we just have walk-through islands and one speed hump at the front on aisle E. This is aisle E. This is aisle F. Also, by lowering the site, we've decreased the amount of grading we have to do, especially along this wildlife corridor side. Again, that's why we could get rid of the wall. So the open space actually increased about 10,000 square feet by lowering this, which gives us a better wildlife corridor here, almost a full 20-foot feet width for the whole way, except for one small area here. And we also eliminated a couple of infiltration systems because as we took the water from the whole building here and put it into this pond, we didn't need the infiltration system that was in aisle F. And there was another smaller one over here that I just combined, and I have that water now going into this center island also. Last thing that came out of DPW and engineering is we had the high point of the road about 80 feet in, and they didn't want the water to flow back onto Brick Hill. So I moved that high point to the property line so only like 20 feet goes back on in accordance with, you know, engineering's wishes. So those are the basic civil site changes I've done. The dry swale shortened up a little bit because this hill goes up here, so I didn't want to really dive into the hill there. Everything else, I think civil-wise, remains the same. We are working with the landscape architect right now on the design of this pond and the planting scheme for that because we don't want it to be an eyesore as we drive up. It's right on the main thoroughfare coming into the property, and we don't want to distract from this beautiful building. Other than that, I think we went through, we addressed the comments that were put out by engineering, and I think we can send you guys a copy of our responses. And I think that's it from a civil point of view. I guess I'll turn it over to Jen.
We have a question here first?
Yeah, oh, yeah. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Right. I'd like to say that the documents you sent us are really clear. I appreciate that. And you've worked cooperatively with all of the town departments. You needed to. Paul, you have a question?
I have two for me. One is, you mentioned hydrodynamics, a unit, a place to oil separator, grit and oil separator. Is that a much larger unit? How does that fit in with the site?
Yeah, oil grit separator is similar to like a septic tank. Has two chambers, gets grit on one side, oil on the other side. The hydrodynamic separator is a smaller unit. It goes in a manhole, and it swirls the water. And in that, in the middle, is that where you collect your sediments and your oils?
Okay, the other question is, can you very briefly talk about the parking? Most of the comments that you answered are in here, and you're making the change. Thank you. But there's a lot of discussion about the parking between the church and Y. Can you just summarize that real briefly?
Yeah, I can summarize that quickly for you, sir. I have a parking calculation down on one hole. So currently, we have... I can't see it from here. (inaudible) right here. I've got my glasses. So currently, there's 176 total bases there. You did blow it up for me. There's a total of 176 spaces on the whole parking lot. I don't know how he blew it up, but he did it.
Pull it back?
Yeah, please.
It's a big file with a lot of overlays, so it's not always the fastest thing to respond?
As I said, there's 176 parking spaces in five aisles. Along the front aisle, right at the church, I think there's 32 spaces dedicated just to the church. There'll be signage indicating so.
It's just not cooperating with them right now, so.
We locked it up.
I think that your written material said that you were actually adding to the parking available to the church and that you are working with them closely.
Yeah. And the thing is, you have the overlap. So there's like 80 spots there that the church can use. So if they have a big event... Currently, they have 49 spaces right now. We're going to give them 34 dedicated spaces, but then they have the opportunity to use another 80 spaces. And the beautiful thing is with the shared parking is that they're off times, right? The church people typically are Sunday morning. A lot of people aren't using the Y facility Sunday mornings. There are going to be people going in there exercising, but they're not going to be your after-school people and swimmers and stuff early, early in the morning. The overlap works good. So even though we took their parking from 49 to 34, if you add on the shared parking, they go up to 126. They have more parking than they have now by three-four. And...
My question, is that a legal agreement between the church and the Y?
So I can actually speak to that, Mr. Dreyer. What I just handed Ms. Harris is an easement agreement that is to be executed and recorded as part of the closing process. So we're nearing our closing date with the church.
Just gave it to us.
Yeah. So we... That hasn't been executed yet because that's going to be executed as part of the closing process, but that's part of our agreement with the church, is that there is this shared parking. And the benefit is the YMCA is taking on the cost of the construction for the parking area and the maintenance of the parking area, which is something that won't be on the church moving forward.
Any other questions so far? John?
Yes. I have three questions. Excuse me. The 20 feet along the side of the roadway that you mentioned?
Yes, sir.
Is that going to remain undisturbed?
Undisturbed. There are some dead snags in there. I think Mike may have talked about later that he wanted to clear out of there because the trees there, they're not real good health. But there are some specimen trees we had to identify. But yes, we're going to keep that as natural as we can.
Okay. Secondly, how many ERV stations are you proposing here?
We're proposing four right now. That's going to be up in aisle F. So there's going to be four right now. And then there's going to be another 14 that are ready, or 16 that are ready.
Have you determined whether they're going to be fast charging or not?
I've called out for type 2, but we haven't vetted that out completely yet, no. That will come out in MEP and...
My third question is the retention pond that you have right there?
Yes, sir.
What would be the... I don't see the plan here, but what's the depth of that?
It's about six feet deep, but that's one of the things we're working on, to try to expand it and to lower that depth because we don't want a big hole in the front yard.
We had an accidental drowning in Falmouth, over by the Falmouth Mall years ago. Similar type of a pond froze over. Two young boys were walking across, and one fell through and drowned.
That's terrible.
So we definitely want to make sure that we don't have the same kind of situation here.
Yeah. By mass stormwater policy, these have to drain in 72 hours, drain dry.
So three days. Just find a way to either protect around the sides so that no one can enter, or...
I'll work with you.
I just want you to be aware of what happened in the past, and I certainly wouldn't want this to happen here.
Never.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead with your presentation.
That's about it. I was going to let Jen take over now and talk about the building components that have progressed. And if you guys come up with any more questions, I'll be sitting right over here.
Thank you.
I'd make one final comment. I like the concept of lowering the floor to eliminate that retaining wall along the wildlife corridor, and also I think it's a benefit for the villagers to the south. Thank you.
I'm Jen Hockerman with SV Design, the YMCA's architect. I'm trying to get back to the presentation. Is the last one?
Yep, the next one over.
Sorry, I can't see it from this angle.
Yep.
Okay. (pause) After our last conversation, we gave a lot of thought to some of the comments, and it's SV, the YMCA, their board. And we did make some tweaks that I'll talk about, but overall, we respectfully disagree with the notion that the front entry is a dated design. One of the things that we looked at, and it's just some of this is a little bit of a recap, is some of the angled columns are a bit of an abstraction. And they are not meant to be little, but they are a bit of an abstraction of the local vernacular architecture and landscape architecture. I have some imagery further along, some of this you have seen previously, but trying to take the feel of some of these natural features and bring them into the architecture of the front entry. The intent is for this to be abstract, to be unique, to be a little contemporary, special, and appropriate to a YMCA in Falmouth. We did agree, however, that some of the angles were a little too severe, and I think that may have been kind of leading to some of the reaction. And so I'm going to flip through. So we took a couple of additional views as well, sort of closer up under here. So we did kind of even out some of the angles as well, so they became a little bit softer in terms of the exact tilt of some of those columns, both front to back and side to side. So trying to take a little bit of that sort of severity of the angle and bring it in a little bit without trying to strip out some of the angles and the design features that make that entry special. A couple other just sort of notes is that the Y has luckily successfully raised over $25 million in funding for this building, largely based on renderings of the front of the facade that the community is really rallying behind. As Kevin mentioned, the Cape Cod Commission did vote unanimously to approve this, including sort of an in-depth staff review specifically of this front entry. We also just wanted to note, I know that everybody's aware of this, but just as a reminder, that this is not a historic neighborhood. It is sort of insular because of the nature of the lot. You cannot see this from the street. And that the angles of the front of the facade here do tie into the rest of the building design. And you can see here along the long wall of the facade of the pool, that the screen is held up by both straight and angled pieces. We also have the back of the gymnasium facade, which is otherwise a very big block, a solid mass, that we broke up with angled trim. So we are respectfully requesting your approval of this modified design.
I saw that you had calmed down the angles, so thank you for that. I assume that your client was going to be the final decider on that. Any other comments from the board about those angled pillars?
I just have one observation. I happened to be in the Lowell area this weekend, and I passed a YMCA. And I don't know if it was a repurpose building or not, but it looked like a factory.
In Lowell? Is that you mentioned?
Near Lowell.
Yeah, okay.
This is much nicer.
I'll have to give them my business card.
But I think that speaks the vernacular of a Lowell.
It must have been repurposed to save money, otherwise they wouldn't have done that.
Well, and that was in Milltown.
John?
So I'd like to mention that when this came from the Cape Cod Commission for review, there was some concern about the looks, as you remember. And I assured them that when it came to the Falmouth Planning Board that we had design review, and we would try to address this with you folks. I personally think it looks like a 1950s motel. Now, that's what the entrance reminds me of, so I'm not... I can't speak for everyone else. I just speak for myself, so that's my... I just speak for myself, so that's my opinion.
Yeah, mine's the same.
Any other comments, plus or minus? I guess everyone will see it slightly differently. Adding the extra elevations helps to understand the building. Any other changes that you've made that you wanna highlight? Thank you.
So the primary changes that we made were to the site plan, civil engineering drawings that Stu reviewed, and some tweaks to the exterior renderings here as well, as Jen has reviewed. Beyond that, I know Stu's been in touch with the engineering department. We submitted everything, hopefully with the intent of having comments back from engineering prior to this hearing, which I understand wasn't able to happen, but I think that we can, you know, I think most of those comments have been addressed, and none of them are heavy in nature, more questions presented, as I said, I think we responded to. That is our presentation, basically in full. I'd be happy to address any questions the board may have in general, or but any specific aspect of this, and otherwise, we defer to you.
I have one question, and it's really not a concern of the board, but a concern of the town. With the funding that's available now, is it sufficient to start?
Our expectation is, well, bear in mind, the funding, the funding that we've received, twenty-five million to date, has been without all the necessary permits in hand. So once we have the necessary permits, which is this board and the zoning board, the last remaining hurdles, I expect that we'll have even more coming in, but we are about ninety-four percent of the way towards the fundraising goal of twenty-eight million. So I, the expectation is that there'll certainly be more fundraising occurring over the next few months, and the hope is to be shovels in the ground by September.
Okay, John?
I just wanna make one more comment, please. My personal opinion of the looks of the front of this building, the rest of the building looks terrific, and I have no issues with it, but I also wanna mention that there's probably some people that don't know what a nineteen-fifties motel looks like.
So you're willing to drop it, but only if you make your point again?
I just wanna say that some people, I have not seen a nineteen-fifties motel.
True.
To me, they just look temporary.
Yeah.
Because if you've ever rebuilt a porch, Tom would know, and you have a roof over it, you support it with temporary poles, and that's what it reminds me of. But, you know, I mean, hey, let's get it built, you know, really.
I'll be honest, when I first saw it, I was iffy, but I've really come around on it, and I think, having read the design memo, understanding where the inspiration for it came from, you know, I do think that, and especially seeing it in connection with some of the other exterior renderings, where they do show some displayed supports along the pool, I think it all ties in really well. And I, but I'm not the person you wanna ask for, for design advice, so...
Well, as long as we're not dropping it immediately, I will continue on. It's very far from the water, so then any relationship it might have on a design basis to wharfs and structures near the water is kind of lost, and most people are never going to walk all the way around the building. They're gonna see the front, they're gonna walk in, and they will see the exterior, slightly angled pieces of the windows, from the interior rather than from the exterior. So it's just, you know, it's one of those things, but it could have gone either way. And familiarity makes everything look better. As soon as this is built and we're all used to it and we like what goes on, it's gonna be fine, and it's way into the woods. So not that it needs to be...
This is a few hundred feet off the street.
It will be a handsome building. I don't mean to run it down, but I think that we're ready to move forward. I wonder if we could ask for a positive motion for the next meeting?
Ms. Harris, I think we do need to open a public comment.
We have some, yeah, there are some more things you have to complete, but I'm assuming you will be able to by the next meeting. Is that right?
So I think we've, I think we've done our homework pending any further comments from the engineering department. I think any decision from this board could be conditioned upon us complying with the stormwater review from the peer review, because I don't think we've gotten any additional feedback on that as well, but I think that's a condition you've done a number of times in the past and would be happy to agree to. So I don't, as of the moment, I don't believe there's any pending homework on our end.
Not that I'm aware of either. Just a reminder, two things. One, you do wanna take public comment. And two, the engineering referral simply hasn't come in yet on the latest revised plans that they're showing.
We've actually been getting public comments, because there's a lot of nodding of heads about going forward, but if there's anyone here who wants to comment on that, please do it now. Come forward.
I'm the chair, members of the board. Hi, my name is Mike Salamondo. I'm with the Village of Brick Hill LLC, with the Butters. I wanna say we're very much in favor of the Y, but I have some concerns. And in the wildlife, and it has to do with the wildlife corridor, as was mentioned, a lot of the trees are designed, a lot of the trees are, you know, they're not in good health. I'll put it that way. And to leave them and to cut, cut the rest of the trees there, we need to do, needs to be something more than just a six-foot fence. There is a barrier. And we, we've been forced to put the houses off our natural, off our street that we put in by the board, and we're pushed up against the back line. And now we're twenty feet off the roadway in some of these areas. Now, I didn't know that they changed the retention pond. Okay, so that, that's a good thing, I think, so that's not gonna be there up against the back of that first house coming in. And we had already cleared out on the sewer lines. Anyway, we made a structure that was fairly, well, it was, it was almost, it was unusable for the town, and it was, it was taken, I think, in nineteen fifty-four, erected in nineteen fifty-eight, and I don't know if anybody touched it since it was there, but we cleaned it out and made it usable again. But we were gonna have some problems if the, if that, I think if that retention area was constructed the way it was, but I think it's now, as you mentioned, that's one of the things that's, that's flowing out, so that's something that I didn't know, that I wanted to, to bring up. But my really concern is the roadway coming in, and why we can't belly that in, you know, towards the church property a little bit more, to get, to get some break for the, for the homeowners that live along this area here, along this, along this stent of the roadway. And I only say that because we're pushed over here, this road up against, the cars going in and out, you can see how many, our homeowners are right up against this line here. There's the wildlife corridor, twenty feet, and then there's a six-foot fence. I mean, I would just ask that the board address this as if you live there, okay? And what would you like to see? I'm putting, I'm planting right, right along here as much as I can. I wish I had more room, because I'd put more trees. I've already put a number of white pines there now, and giants, a few arborvitae, or many arborvitae. But it's still not gonna be with this track coming through here. Why if they can share parking, why they can't share more for the driveway with the church is my own, is my own concern.
I understand your point. Could the designer come and talk about the placement of that roadway?
So two things. One is that we do have this long six-foot fence that comes around here and then also in here. We are currently working with our landscape architect to create evergreen screening, probably some kind of arborvitae, to come around that side, so that these arborvitae's around that whole length of that fencing piece that backs up to the village property will have evergreen screening on the residential side of that fence. The other thing that we are unfortunately sort of stuck with is this pinch point here. So in terms of bending the driveway around, it sort of has to come through here, and then once we're past that choke point, we're trying to bring it into the site and toward the front door as much as we can, once we're past this point.
Well, this is actually better than what was there originally. It is better, but my point is, if all of a sudden you're combining the two parking lots together, because originally that wasn't the case, there were two separate ones, at least that's the first one that I saw, and now that they've combined both, why can't they combine the access as well?
So I don't really wanna speak for the church, but I can tell you that the church doesn't want to prohibit their further potential sale of their property, or even further subdivision of their property. So while they're willing to provide us with an access for parking at the rear, they, the church was not interested in being part of the driveway for the YMCA. They, they were very clear with us that the entry point would be on the property that we purchased from them, not across their property. Now, we've worked out an arrangement that's beneficial to both parties for parking at the rear of the church, but, you know, if we were to take access through the church lot, that would effectively prohibit them from, from doing anything else with that lot moving forward.
Right, Kevin, could you point out where the boundary is?
So the actual property boundary, if you follow this line right here, this is the property boundary. This is the current church driveway, which comes into what is currently the church parking area here.
Right.
So, you know, what we're doing is basically leaving this area here dedicated to the church. This is the shared parking, and then we have the Y parking on the Y site. But the church was very clear, they, one, this is their rector's home here, and this is the church building here. They did not want their driveway to be the driveway access point for the YMCA.
So his question, why couldn't you move the drive, balloon the driveway more toward the church, is, no, you don't have the land.
We don't have the land, and more than that, the church, you know, has, has considered a number of possibilities for what they might do with their own land moving forward. And the way it's left, they could potentially cut that into two lots.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
The only other thing that I would like to see is if, instead of the fence, there's gonna be plenty of material, some of this stuff, unless it's a balanced site, which I don't think it is.
Uh-uh, please address your remarks this way.
I'm sorry. My background is engineering, so I just, I just, so I'm just kind of directing it to you and the engineer. Why don't, I don't think it's a balanced site. You're gonna have some excess in here, because even, because of the cellar and everything else. Why not create, instead of the fence, you know, why don't we just create a berm on your side of the wildlife corridor? Replant it, because most of those trees, keep the good, the good, the good specimens, all right? But then increase, you know, even with smaller plants on a berm is gonna do much better than the six-foot fence that they propose. As far as screening, I'm looking for screening. We keep the wildlife, I mean corridor. I, I think that would be a better, and they'd use, they'd save money by having not to truck it off, truck the material off the site. They could keep it on the site and build a berm all along there.
I think that they've heard your suggestion, so thank you.
I think, all I'd ask is the board look at this as if they were gonna live there. That's all. Thank you. We're very much in favor of it.
As are we. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? So Jen, if it's okay with the board, we would get ready for a positive motion?
We have already started drafting you a positive motion. Keep in mind that they will be applying for a special permit for the parking in the front yard. That hearing will open on the twenty-eighth of January, so that is your next meeting. If you would like, we can have at least a skeleton or an outline of that positive motion for you at that time.
Yeah, let's take a look at it.
Provided that...
Another site plan review with that special permit?
Just a special permit.
Okay. But this issue they're talking about, increase the berm or landscaping, will we have time to see if the applicant wants to do that?
Well, one of the items that I was gonna communicate to the applicant is, you know, part of site plan review is a landscaping plan, so that is the one element that is missing from the application.
I thought we submitted the landscaping plan.
Unless I've missed it.
I'll double check.
Perhaps over two.
I'll double check if we've submitted. I thought we had, but if not, I have it.
Great.
I thought we can submit tonight. Yeah, I, obviously, we're willing to, to consider sort of all the options, but I think what Mr. Salamondo had just suggested would require basically clearing the wildlife corridor, which would seem to frustrate the entire purpose of the wildlife corridor. I don't think that we'd be able to do that. We're not gonna rule anything out, but I think that what we've suggested provides an awful lot of effective screening for the Butters.
So to summarize, provided that the engineering referral comes back and it's items that can be easily modified or taken care of, and that we have a landscaping plan, we can provide you at least with those documents at the next meeting, and you can go from there.
And that's the twenty-eighth?
That's the twenty-eighth of January, yeah.
Okay. We hope everything comes together by then.
I mean, I've actually been in the property, to look out the back window and see how close that road is to the house.
It's very close.
And it's gonna impact the people there forever. This is a major thing, and I'm not so sure that the idea of a berm and planting isn't a really good one. I'd like to see them explore that. If you all had, go stand in that house and say that's gonna be your room, and you're gonna look out right there where that pinch point is there, it's really, really close, and it should be considered. It's a major thing, and I, I think, it's not a lot of money, and I, and if you're really worried about the wildlife corridor, I think the animals will be able to get by the berm. I'm not so sure that work in a wildlife corridor. I think the important thing about wildlife corridor is not blocking it, but letting the animals go back and forth is my understanding of what it is. I think we should just be a little considerate, the way it pinches in that little bit right there to, it hits the neighbor. I mean, I suggest if you wanted to go, go stand in that house and look out the back window, I've done it. So I understand the point. I just wanna point that out.
I can picture it, I've seen it from the street.
You can see it. It's, it's a pinch point, it's close.
I agree with Mr. Fox. I've driven in that area as well. We should be a little bit more considerate.
I think they've heard you. We'll see what comes up.
I do stand corrected, you did submit a landscaping plan. We will provide it to the board for the next meeting, and you can discuss it.
And I appreciate the consideration, that is a good idea. I'm also anxious to get it approved and get it moving forward, so let's work on both.
Absolutely.
We, we have to be neighbors with Mr. Salamondo and the owners at that property forever, so it's in our interest, in their interest, to be able to work out something that makes sense for everyone.
Good, good, thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to move on.
Anybody else? Any other public comment?
There didn't seem to be anyone else. Next up, we have, next applicant is Lawrence Lynch.
Do you need to vote a motion for Jed to draft a positive?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, we just give him direction, and then he does it.
Yeah, we don't do that by emotion.
Okay, just checking.
So far, he's gotten the message every time.
Thank you all very much. We really appreciate your time.
Thank you, it's a great project. Lawrence Lynch Realty Corporation. This is a site plan application to construct a solar rotaria carport canopy system over gravel parking area at four fifty-nine Blacksmith Shop Road. Speaking for this, we have...
Good evening, men of chair and members of the board. My name is Mike Patterson, I'm from Neck's Grid. With me today is Rob Bukowski from Weston and Sampson, to help us present. It should be minimized in the tray. All right. You got it. I think it's the one right before this one. Okay, apologize. So we were here on December tenth, we got continued, so we're here to continue our presentation, requesting a minor modification to the original site plan approval from Borrego Solar from June of 2019. There were some questions and comments from the board, as well as the department, which Weston and Sampson provided responses to those comments. I know a couple of the big things were, when we were here first time, there was some outstanding taxes, back tax on the property, those have been paid, and the payment was registered. Also, I think a big contentious point, which apologies, there was the word "carport," which obviously, we know this is in the Water Resource Protection District, parking cars is not allowed in this, so again, we do apologize. It's kind of like a general term for elevate... So again, we do apologize, it's kind of like a general term for elevated solar installations, but it is a canopy, it is a ground-mounted, canopy-mounted solar array system. We have no plans on doing any type of parking. We're just here to request the approval of the solar portion, so we can build what is known as the northern portion of the, from the original Borrego solar approval.
All right, I think our issue is the height of the canopy.
Yes, ma'am.
We discussed that the last time you were here.
Yes, ma'am. So, we came back with that, it's in the updated design, so, so the clearance is 22 feet, the top will be approximately 28 feet. My understanding is the maximum height in the agricultural A is 35 feet. It's also important, remember, this is a quite low depression, so I do not believe that the top of the canopy will get to the ground level, and there's also, the area is completely surrounded, sorry, surrounded with trees. So, yeah, so the top of canopies will be approximately 30 feet tall, and then there's a steep elevation to the top of, I'll call it, the top of the bowl, and then on top of the bowl, it is heavily forested all the way around, so there's really no possibility of seeing the site from outside of it without going through the access road.
Right, I spent some time really trying to study it from the topographical and satellite maps that Google provides, and it's as if it's got a series of pits dug there. That's what's there now?
This, yes, currently, it is a sand excavation pit.
Right, it's what's left after it's been mined. So your plan is to level that?
So our plan is to level out the bottom, and then, as you can see, there's also two, Rob, these are water retention areas or infiltration areas? So, yeah, the idea is to just level it out, so we can have a better building footprint for the solar arrays.
Okay, and our concern before, and we discussed it a bit, is that we've created the opportunity to do something that you, that the zoning doesn't allow you to do.
Yes, I understand. Granted, there is also a gated access point to get into the place. Again, yes, we are building an elevated solar array, the idea is at some point, someone else may want to come and lease the space underneath for an allowable use in this area.
Well, there do not seem to be very many allowable uses at all.
I agree, ma'am, I agree.
What do you consider an allowable use under the current provision?
From, what I saw, there's, looks like a special permit would be required for a storage location for fertilizers, soil conditioners. Obviously, there are specific specifications on the requirements for storing that material. Again, so this could be an opportunity for that. Again, we're not requesting approval for that, all we're requesting is the approval for the solar, and then obviously, if we lease the space beneath the canopy at a later date to someone, it would be their responsibility to come before this board to request a, for an approved use of that space.
They'd actually go to the zoning board.
They would go, oh.
It's a special permit.
Yeah, I apologize, because they'd go to the zoning board.
You're right. They have to come again to the town.
Yes, ma'am.
That's true, that's some protection, but a more definite protection would be lower solar arrays. Is it easier to service those arrays if they're higher? In fact, do they need servicing?
I mean, granted, for like, the panels themselves, I imagine the only rule of service would be, I mean, if we lived in a much drier era, we'd be washing them, so obviously, we get a decent amount of rain. Not recently, this last year was pretty bad, pretty dry, but there's really no maintenance on those. The equipment that main, that would need semi-annual maintenance would be the equipment that's mounted on the concrete pads. So this equipment, and obviously, servicing that is, you know, easy enough, it's easily accessible, but the canopy itself, there's really no, like, maintenance that needs to be done on it. If, and again, these systems are fully monitored, so let's say we notice that production has gone down, I mean, it could be, there could be dirt or dust on that, and if that is, you know, the only allowable cleaning of them is just water, there's no scrubbing, there's no, any type of a detergents. But again, it's pretty limited, the amount that that's required, or that's needed.
Anyone on the board have any questions?
No, I don't have any concern about the height, because you want to maximize your solar gain, so that's why they're higher. And when it comes to any future use of what's underneath, we do have the ZBA that's going to take care of any questions about that, and anything that comes before them for a use, we don't do uses, they do, so I feel comfortable with putting it in their hands.
That's good to hear.
I do too, I think the property owner needs to, kind of spending a lot of money, and they should protect future income sources that are allowed by right, or through special permit uses. I think that's a prudent construction project to do that.
I guess I'm going to be outvoted.
Well, I can understand, but I don't think we should control their uses by a height restriction, I think that's, I don't think, I don't think that's our job.
Any member of the public wish to comment? Jed?
So, I have drafted a positive motion for you, in the event that you're comfortable. I do have a couple of questions related to it, so if I may, just to the applicant.
Please go ahead.
The chain link fence, is that going to be around the entire site, or just the battery storage area?
Just the battery storage. I know Weston and Sampson had a meeting with, I apologize, I am blanking on the name, I think his name, Chuck.
Chuck Martenson.
Yes, had a meeting, he had some concerns regarding the fencing in, like, the certain areas here, here, and here, just because, due to their proximity to the, I'm going to call it the pit wall, so he just had requirements of a four-inch critter gap around, as well as minimum of five feet, the fence being five feet away from the bottom of the embankment, to prevent any possible obstructions to amphibian access, or the possibility of some animal getting stuck between the pit wall and the fence.
Right. And you said the top of the canopy itself would be approximately 28, or is it 30?
28 to 30 feet.
28 to 30 feet, okay.
The bottom part is 22 feet, and there's some space for the rest of the structure, as well as the canopy, or the racking and the panels, so.
Okay. And apologize if you mentioned this before, the number of panels that were previously approved in 2019, is that changing in this proposal? Are you remaining with the same number of panels?
I am not quite sure what the original was, or how many, like, specific panels it was. The production will be going higher than, I mean, it's been five years, so just the efficiency of panels has gotten significantly better since then.
But the overall size of the project, the north array and the south array, remains the same?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And the battery storage sites, now, I didn't notice them in the previous approval? Are these new, new locations?
From our past.
A 2019 approval, I'm not sure if you're familiar with that.
That, that I do not know, I do know that it, you know, it came with a battery system, but, you know, because we obviously, the layout is a little bit different than what they had proposed, it's probably a slightly different location.
Okay. That's all I have for questions. I'll just note, in, if you're comfortable, the draft motion that I prepared for you clearly indicates, I didn't know the proposed height of the panels until tonight, so you'll see that in bold red, and you can just insert 28 to 30 feet, and then, condition number, condition number three, which indicates that the seven-foot chain link fence would be around the entire facility, that would be edited to just the battery storage areas. So those two modifications, if you're comfortable, can be made to the draft motion, if you want to read that into the record.
Yes. I wonder if we have to close the meeting?
Just a public meeting.
Right.
So you're, yep, you're safe.
If the board's comfortable, we can go forward and hear the motion. Bob, do you want to read it?
You got it.
I think it's right there.
Draft, January 14th, 2025, motion that the planning board voted to approve the application of Blacksmith Sharp Solar LLC to modify the previous site plan review approved of June 20th, 2019, to now install an elevated photovoltaic PV solar array on the north array at 459 Blacksmith Sharp Road under Section 240, 12.2 site plan review of the zoning bylaw. Findings, on June 20th, 2019, the planning board voted to approve an application for Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., under a site plan review to construct 7,330.5 kilowatt large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic PV and energy storage systems at Zero Blacksmith Sharp and then Zero Locust Field Road. That application insisted of two arrays, referenced as the north array and the south array in the 2019 project plan set. This minor modification will only affect the north array, which since the 2019 approval has yet to be built. The project consists of elevating the previously approved solar array from a height of nine feet to a future height of X feet, which is now 28 to 30 feet, and providing a gravel ground cover below the structures. Additionally, earthwork is proposed to grade the gravel area and the embankments, and a stormwater management system is proposed to treat runoff from the proposed impervious surfaces. Utilities include a solar PV canopy, battery, energy storage systems, electrical equipment, inverters, transformers, et cetera, and interconnection. This modification is only to elevate the solar array and does not include a proposed future use under the array. No screening trees are proposed as part of the project, existing vegetation is proposed to remain around the perimeter of the site. Conditions, the plan shall be constructed and approved, any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if modification, this decision is necessary. Two, at no time shall the land under the proposed elevated solar array be used for any purpose without prior approval from the town. Any future use within the limits of the site will need to be submitted for acceptance by the town and comply with the requirements of the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. Six, the applicant shall file a stormwater management permit, be with the Department of Public Works Engineering Division prior to any land disturbance. Seven, any connections to, or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town and province.
That's it?
Yeah. Posted once in blue.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm curious, the fourth paragraph on the findings, they talk about a, construct a 7,330.5 kilowatt. Why we have five significant figures, I'm not sure you can measure it that closely.
I am not an expert in that field.
What question, what, what did you say that again? Your question?
My question is, why is there five significant figures on a solar array, you can't measure it that closely? Why don't you just drop the point five and say 7330? I've gone to court over this, that's why it made it sensitive. If you put too many figures on it, it destroys your credibility.
I would suggest they use a higher number and not worry about the rounding.
It was, it was, what was approved in 2019?
So for the record, there are additional, there's additional information in the draft motion, you simply are reading every, sort of a summarized version, not to go through the entire thing, and there'll be a total of nine conditions. And so, remember, Mary noted only four of them, but we can certainly share the decision with the applicant after it's finalized tomorrow morning.
Is there any unusual condition, or are they the standard ones?
No, they're fairly standard, so there's conditions that were included in the previous approval, so as an example, the last condition is the applicant shall notify the planning board by certified mail of any change in ownership of the solar project and the underlying parcel. So that comes in handy, obviously, if, you know, things are to sell or to be conveyed in any way. There was the condition about the chain link fence, again, that was just related to the battery storage area, and then soil and erosion and stormwater, those are standard conditions. Keep it all on site.
Okay, then, we're ready to take a vote.
Yes.
Okay. That is, did we get a second? I don't think so. Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're ready to go ahead.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time, and have an excellent evening.
Good luck with it. Next up, JJEC Development LLC, site plan review application to construct 11 two-bedroom apartments in three one-story structures at 4 Sandwich Road. And this is our second or third time around with this one. Mr. Amen?
Good evening, thanks, Madam Chairman.
Who do you want?
On record, Bob Amen, Calmeth Attorney. This is our second site plan review hearing. Tom Bunker, who prepared the site plans, is with us again. Eric Eschander, for the applicant, look at that, Enterprises. And the architect, John Keenan, had an appointment at the Boston Garden tonight, so it was not a good idea. We've made some revisions to the plans, which reflect suggestions made at the last meeting, so I'm going to pull up this site plan and use it to point some things out. Maybe the most significant change is, in response to the concern about trying to provide some storage for the tenants, actually added a storage shed, it's a real part of the architecture, it's not, it's not a freestanding shed, it's part of each building, we'll show you that on the plans. And so each unit now has its own shed, large enough for storage of household goods, but also large enough for somebody to keep children's bicycles and adult bicycles. So we not only have provided, what I think is important, bike storage, it's covered, private, and safe storage that people would be able to have. I point out, there is a bike rack already existing at the Dunkin' Donuts nearby, we could put in a separate bike rack on the site, besides providing for all the tenants, but maybe it's not necessary, I don't think it is necessary, because we've also show a play area, all of which is fenced in, a significant area for the use of the tenants, and we've extended the sidewalk to get to it, and I suppose visitor could attach a bicycle to the, to the fencing, if necessary. We also now have every entrance to the buildings, the front and back are all covered, which is a nice benefit. This plan shows the lighting illustrated as illuminated, that was pretty clever on the part of Tom Bunker, to be able to show that. And what's interesting, of course, is that, that all of this lighting is away from the abutting properties. So it's, the lighting itself is significantly separated from other properties, but it's also, for the most part, screened by the buildings themselves. The only lighting in the back of the buildings affecting other properties, and it won't affect them, because it would just be a downlight in the ceiling of the covering over the entrance. I think that's really a good result for, for the lighting. We're showing the traffic flow, it's all one-way, except just in this area. Now, the plans that have been filed with the board and that were reviewed by the engineering department. Now, the plans that have been filed with the board and that were reviewed by the engineering department showed this as one-way even in here, that was a mistake. It was intended that this would be two-way so that, but only up to here, so that cars parked along here or in here would be able to exit without having to go possibly within the queue for the fast food drive-through, not having to go this way. They should be able to park in this space and just go out. So that's a two-way. We think that the traffic pattern, the flow through the drive-through, is optimal the way it's shown. Any other plan that would try to go through this is, it doesn't improve anything. It becomes very complicated. This one-way traffic flow is much better. We've slightly changed the layout of the parking in front of the buildings. There's some question raised by the engineering department whether these spaces fifteen and sixteen in front of the first building would interfere with cars entering the site. These are not in the front yard, they're set back more than thirty-five feet from the street. For a car to be able to just back out here and leave, especially given that it's residential parking and wouldn't be used, all that, there wouldn't be that many trips, we think it's fine. However, if otherwise, there is the possibility, right along here, of creating three parallel parking spaces. The distance between the building, this is shows better on the other plans, let's give you it. So this distance between these parking spaces and this, especially for one-way traffic, is plenty wide to be able to have three parallel space along here if you widen the pavement by a mere two feet. So we could do that. And it does suggest that, you know, there are options for how to locate thirty-eight parking spaces on the site. But even that, as you know, we think is, although it meets the bylaw and is required, is excessive because we don't need eighteen parking spaces for the eighteen seats that are inside the Dunkin' Donuts building. And we're providing two parking spaces for each apartment. Keep in mind that now only one space is required if this was a Mr. Cod project, and the Mr. Cod zone actually ends at our property line. So we're providing two parking spaces for every residential apartment, plus eighteen for the Dunkin' Donuts store. We've counted about fifty trees that will get removed in order to, and they're all shown on this plan. But, as shown on that landscape plan, which is pretty much this, this plan shows seventy-nine trees to be planted. Forty-three of them, and Tom Bunker says he's got another one to add, are screening trees. And provide quite a lot of buffer. The rest are shade trees or flowering trees. But the proposal shown on the plan is for a mix of seventy-nine, nine trees. The fencing has been extended, that was brought up at the last hearings. We've got fencing, it would go all the way to connect to the existing fencing. That's between these two business-owned properties. Remember that property to the north is, though it's in residential use, it is a business-owned property. As I mentioned, the plans do show the illumination illustrated. There was some question asked about lighting, existing lighting at Dunkin' Donuts. And so I've noticed that when the Dunkin' Donuts store is closed at night, surprisingly, there is no lighting at all, lighting up that building. The only light is some lighting inside the building. And even when the store is open at night, the existing lighting is very subdued. Very much so. There is pole lighting, but it is, it's surprising how little impact it must, it would have on the abutters, certainly on, I would think, on the abutter, the residential abutters to the west. The revised plan shows a path to extend to the street. And the purpose of this path really is to access this existing area, remains of an old curb cut. There was a suggestion that there should be an area provided for children and parents to congregate in the morning or to be received in the afternoon from a school bus. And that's the reason why we've shown that path and the reason why we're proposing not to landscape that existing area. There is a similar area farther to the north that's shown to be relandscaped. We could certainly landscape this area, but again, we thought it was a good idea to provide that area for that purpose, and there was a suggestion of, of the board.
And you seem to have decided against a sidewalk.
I'm sorry?
You've decided against a sidewalk along the street.
Yes, we haven't shown a sidewalk there, and that's, of course, a major issue to discuss. The engineering department in its referral provides a lot of input for improvements within the roadway. They would like to see the granite curbing extended on the south side, that's this side of Sandwich Road. I'll try to bring up a plan that's for, shows the whole site here. Yes, that'd be this. And they would suggest that there be granite curbing and a sidewalk all the way from the northern radius of the entry to the property line. Well, the sidewalk on Sandwich Road already exists all the way from Route twenty-eight to Brick Hill Road. On the other side of the street, there is a sidewalk. And there is no sidewalk on the west side of the street after, well, after this curb cut, after the south side of this curb cut. There is an existing path, not mentioned by the engineering department, that would, does allow people to walk from these residences here. And the path is paved and it go, and it's lit, and it goes down the sidewalk on the southeast corner of the property. The issue really is one of cost to make these improvements. There's an existing site for the Dunkin' Donuts. These residences don't require these improvements as far as we're concerned. And we're not sure of what the cost to them will be. What we are sure about is we don't know if this project is feasible because we don't have all the costs that are involved. This is not a subsidized project. It is not a for-sale project. These units are for rental. The board can restrict them for rental. And the return is not quick, and the return is not certain. The project just under construction on Main Street at four sixty-four Main Street that Joe Valley is building is being subsidized by the town to the tune of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per apartment, a total of one point eight seven five million dollars to make that project work. It would not be going, it would not be under construction otherwise. Now, that is a project that is restricted, rent-restricted. But the rentals from this project, these are not large units, they're on a, they're not in a fancy location, are not going to be so much higher than the subsidized rents than a rent-restricted project, that this becomes clearly doable. So, given what we're trying to do, create workforce housing on a business-owned property, not at a density of twenty units per acre that Mr. Cod would allow, but at less than the six per acre, this is two acres, we're proposing ten units of rental housing, we don't know if it's going to work, and I don't know, and Mr. Eschander doesn't yet know, whether he can do this project, whether economically it will work. What we do know is that if we keep adding expenses which we think are optional, a number of things that are in the engineering department's referral say they recommend. They're recommending a sidewalk, and that is up to the board. Now, some, they say, are requirements. Close in and landscape that area, we're proposing to remain available as a congregating area, and redo granite curbing and textured ramp on both sides of the driveway. We would strongly ask the planning board to review those recommendations. Review what the, what the engineering department says they would require. And perhaps staff and we should have a meeting about it and figure out what can we really do. But I think it is up to the planning board, and it will be up to the zoning board of appeals, to indicate what are the requirements. And I think the town has to keep in mind that this is all weighing the benefits of a project versus the detriment. And here, we're not creating a detriment, this all exists. And if the town wants a sidewalk leading north to nowhere, the town could put it in. If the town feels there should be granite curbing, the town can put it in. We're not asking for a subsidy from the town for this rental project. But we don't want to have too many expenses that are, that burden the project.
Mr. Ahmed, is this another, we've had owners who are, who are building, who have been here and have testified, and they have built housing so that their own employees could find a place to live here in town. And they maintain it as rental property for that purpose. Is there some intention here of the owner doing that?
The owner does not intend to sell this project.
No, he's running it as a rental project, I understand. But is he in effect building housing for his workers?
The expectation is that there will be workers, that is, employees of Dunkin' Donuts, who may live there, but it won't be restricted to Dunkin' Donuts employees. The owner of this property operates dozens of Dunkin' Donuts franchises in southeast Massachusetts, over fifty. And in the summer employs a thousand people. Many of them J-one workers, so there are temporary workers involved. And they have experienced the loss of key employees because they could not help them find housing on the Cape. That's really what was the genesis for the idea of trying to create some housing. On all the properties, they don't own all the properties that they have franchises on, but they own some of them. And they have never done a housing project before. They're, this is, for them, an accessory to this site. It is the restaurant that is their business. They don't need to do this project, but it can't, it can't be a money loser for them. So we would like to, we would like it if the units could all be accessible. Absolutely impossible at the cost to do that. We would like it if the units, even if not meeting all of the state requirements, to be determined accessible, which, by the way, is why we're doing duplexes, because under the state regulations, the duplexes do not have to be all accessible. We would like it if we could, but we won't have this housing if we had to do that. We would like to at least have the units be visitable, meaning they don't have to have steps to get into the entrances. The architects have estimated the cost of making them visitable more than half a million dollars. We're trying to do, create housing. We're one of those businesses which people say, why don't you solve your own problem? Why don't you create housing? Well, this owner is trying to do that, and we want it to be successful. And, and we, while we would like units to be visitable, that's not a requirement, and we're not showing that on the, on the plans. But the same thinking is going into our reaction to the engineering department. Sure, we'd like to do these things, but we may not have a project. If, we don't know the answer to that yet.
Okay.
So I just want to think, what do we, what do we need to do for this to be a good project? And not get, not have the, you know, perfect, get in the way of something that would be very good, and you know what I'm saying.
You do.
And I, and I don't know the answers to, you know, I don't know exactly what the costs are, but neither does the owner know exactly what this would cost when this gets built in the future, so.
Thank you for clarifying that thinking. Is there any questions from the board or concerns? John?
I have a question, yes. One of, one of the plans show a lot of green area around these structures. Is that all going to be grass?
I'll pull up that landscape plan which I had a moment ago. I think the answer is yes.
So everything I see green, you're, is going to propose to be grass and plantings?
Yeah, now, Tom Bunker perhaps?
Except the little, except the little area where it remained paved where the sidewalk goes out to the road.
Right there?
Everything with this area? Everything but that?
Yeah, well, we're not showing that as, as the green.
If it's green, you're proposing to have grass and plantings there?
Yes, and we're showing the trees, and I'm sure there'll be, first. Past performance is, is not a guarantee of the future. But if you look at this site and the other Dunkin' Donuts stores that Cadet Enterprises run, they're really maintained beautifully.
I'm not, I'm not questioning, I'm just.
And so I'm sure that it's, it will be similar.
I'm just asking, is it proposed to be grass? It looks green, so.
Yes.
But it doesn't say on the plan what it's going to be.
I think, the record, my name is Tom Bunker, be assisted there. I think there's a key at the bottom, but the green is grass, the brown is mulch and shrubs, so there's more, you know, landscape shrubs down there. Drought-tolerant lawn.
Says drought, actually.
Okay, thank you.
The way the drawing's done with the illumination for the downlights really clarifies that whole situation. Thank you, that's a good way to show it.
That was a, they do a lot with lighting now, their LEDs, just only downlights, and they can direct them very carefully, like that.
And I particularly like the sheds that have been added and the covers over the doorways, they're good improvements. And I particularly like the sheds that have been added and the covers over the doorways, they're good improvements. Bob?
What is the proposed rental gonna be for these units?
Well, there may be special deals for employees, but otherwise I assume it'll be just market rate. But again, this isn't gonna be expensive rentals, although it certainly will be expensive to some people. I don't know what the figure will be, Bob.
Jim?
I'm also.
I had a couple of questions, Mr. Bunker maybe. The way through what a system is gonna pick up Dunkin' Donuts. Do they have a system that's gonna be abandoned? And is there some kind of agreement between the two buildings? Between the two complexes on who's gonna maintain that in the long term?
Well, the residences, the apartments will continue to be owned.
Sorry?
It'll all one site.
It'll all become an ownership.
Okay, it's all one, as you'd answer. Are they gonna abandon the existing one Dunkin' Donuts has?
Are they gonna abandon what?
The existing septic system.
Oh, yes, thank you, but as we've previously said at the last meeting. This site is in a coastal pond overlay district. It's in the nitrogen sensitive area. We are putting in a state of the art nitro system for the residences. And we are going to connect the existing, we're gonna abandon the existing septic system for the Dunkin' Donuts store. And we'll be connecting that to the denitification system. We have submitted the calculations for nitrogen loading. And by using the nitro system and connecting the existing flows to that system. We will actually be reducing the, the per pounds per acre, whatever the calculation is. And we've given those, those figures. So it's, it's really a gain. As the Mr. Cod district ends at the property line, so does the sewer district. And although in the two thousand and sixteen permit, site plan review decision that allowed the conversion of the bank to the Dunkin' Donuts. Said that this lot would be part of the sewer. Either the plans have changed or that was a mistake, because it is not mapped as in the sewer district. And we've had discussions with Amy Lowell about whether that could, whether we could expand into that and hook up to the sewer. And the answer is a clear no. So instead, we're required to use the denitification system. It's extremely expensive. Throw out a figure, do you have a figure? Am I? No. I was, it's very expensive.
You've probably read about it, articles in the enterprise about the cost of these, for a single family house. Adds roughly thirty thousand dollars to one house, and this is, you know, an equivalent of five houses. That's just the additional cost to what would normally be a septic system.
So this is a couple hundred thousand dollar cost to do this. That's what we think. But we're gonna hook up the store.
One minor point, buildings are numbered two to six, what happened to number one?
It's the donut shop.
The donut shop.
The donut is number one?
At the requirement of the engineering department that we give that a number.
Tom? Any member of the public wish to speak? Have any questions?
I have a question. Could you bring up the corner in the top?
I have to cut off the microphone so I get it right.
Sir, sir, if you're gonna speak, could you come to the microphone and give your name? Thank you.
Mike Bishop, I actually live right next to my cousin Laurie, so I mean right in the corner.
Number seven, I think, Mike, I'm six.
So the play area is.
Yes, so where the play area is.
Yep.
My first question is, what are these two things right here?
Yeah, those are the, those are the leaching pits. They're underground, but because of the CAD program, they shall always white circles, but they're underground.
So they're invisible to?
One of them, right below the P and play, will have a small grate to, for the water, to catch the water. The other one and the one in the little triangular area, they'll just, if anything, just be a man cover.
Yeah.
But it's not a big, big thing like it looks.
So you mentioned the fencing, how high is the fence that goes all the way around?
Here is a six foot chain link fence.
Okay. Do you have anything for noise abatement? Because like I said, our properties are directly on there. And, I mean, I grew up there, I've lived there permission my whole life, so has Laurie. And it's a very quiet neighborhood, it's all families that live there. So this is a huge shock to us by putting this pretty large development right in our backyard. So if you could put some type of noise abatement there, I think that would go a long way for the neighbors.
Yeah, you just respond that currently we have nothing specifically noise abatement in that area. Beyond the fence, there's a little bit of room that we just showed a leave in its present condition, which is kind of viney and briary.
I mean, just with having a play area there, obviously there's gonna be kids there playing pretty often, I'm assuming. But that would be, that would be my recommendation. Aphrodites or something like that across the whole, you know, on this side of the fence or other side or wherever you wanna put them. I think that would go a long way.
Mr. Bunker, it looked as if you had changed the landscaping and placement of the play area in response to the abutter at the last hearing. Who also was very concerned about noise, light, and just the change in, in her neighborhood. And it looked as if.
I believe that's my mother.
Oh, okay.
Aunt Mary.
That you had made changes in response to that.
Well, we added the play area and that was one of the concerns, the people, kids wouldn't have anywhere to go except in the parking lot. But, yeah, we had that. And had some little triangular green space. Both areas have benches on it, so it's not always raucous kids playing with some quiet time too, perhaps.
Hi, board, my name is Lori Lopes, I am in a butter, I am lot six. I'm just gonna start off with what Michael was talking about, we'll go there. So it's a six foot fence. Is the play area fenced in also, and then the fence on the, the, is the, or can the children go right up to the fence? That is gonna be along the two properties. I mean, I've, I have goats there, I have, you know, pets, and I am concerned about that.
The. On one plan, I believe that area is labeled as the goat pen.
I really, I was just, it's a little bit over the line, we're gonna move it, yeah.
Well, we avoided it with the fence, so I have the fence.
I mean, I think it's like eighteen inches or something.
And all through there, the fence does not go all the way to the property line. So there's some space beyond it which could be used for some other screening or whatever there.
So there's no fence, like, so the kids will be able to go right up to the fence?
So, Mr. Bunker, are you suggesting that the abutters could plant in that extra space that won't belong to them?
No, I'm suggesting that when you talk about possible screening or noise abatement. I mean, you know, unless they wanted to give them, I'm not, I'm not giving them permission to plant on this land. But I'm saying that perhaps something could be planted there.
I think they're suggesting maybe the owner of this property could plant something there.
It's something we could think about as far as, as far as noise or equipment. A stockade type fence also, which might perhaps would cut down the noise a little bit.
And that would be maintained by the property owners, I'm sure, 'cause stockade fence doesn't last long. So, I'm sorry, is there only one fence from the, like, the kids can go right up to the fence? They can? Okay, so I'm a little concerned about that with my, my animals and whatnot, my dog and the kids.
Fence is not right on the property line though, so there's.
But it doesn't stop a child from climbing over it? So, when Mr. Fox said you went to the church and you looked out the window and you could see a chain link fence. When I now look out my kitchen window, I'm gonna see a chain link fence and also a playground right in my backyard. Also, is there no light, no lighting in the play area? I don't see it, there's no lighting in there?
Well, I think in response to testimony that we heard last time, an effort was made to keep light out of there.
Right, well, there was no playground last time.
No, but there was an area abutting, your property, that you were concerned about, or someone was concerned about the light.
Right, that's, we are concerned about that. And I'm, I'm just saying, I don't see any lighting in the play area, is there no lighting in the play area?
We have no lighting planned.
Okay.
In the play area.
Okay, great. Also, few other my concerns, the dumpsters, where are the dumpsters?
Yeah, excuse me if I could.
'Cause they, right now, they empty the dumpster, the present dumpster at Dunkin' Donuts at five in the morning. Will they be emptying this dumpster at the same time? That'd be two dumpsters that'd be emptied at five AM. And sometimes a little earlier. And I believe Cal Cavosa may have got a special permit to, to go earlier in the morning. It seems a little early for me, for us, but they are, they are five in the morning, they're there at the. So the dumpsters are.
The dumpster is here and it's.
That's the existing one?
No, the existing one is around here. This is the proposed dumpster.
Is that for the residents?
Yes.
Just one dumpster?
One dumpster here. It's, it's, it's behind your house, but it's lower. This is again, this is elevation fifty-five, and the ground up here is about sixty-four, sixty-three or so.
Appreciably lower.
It's, it's lower.
Okay. So just, so will the dumpsters still be emptied at five o'clock in the morning?
We can answer that.
I'm somewhat familiar with it, I believe it's four-thirty. I happen to live next to one of them also. The town passed some kind of traffic mitigation thing for the, to get the big trucks off the road. So even though that you're not allowed to make noise in these areas till seven AM, they gave a waiver to the trash haulers to come at four-thirty. And I live next to one of them, and that's why I go swimming at five o'clock in the morning, 'cause I get up at four-thirty when the dumpster goes off. And I happen to live in a mixed zoning area, and it is very annoying, but.
That's probably the.
That's a townwide permit that they've given to the trash trucks to mitigate traffic on the road.
Yes, that's not very fair for the residents to have to listen to that.
It's all over the whole town though, it's not just you and.
Where should that?
Selectment, it was, it's everywhere. It is done to get the big trucks in and out of woods hole and off the streets early, so to, for, for traffic mitigation. But if you happen to live next to one of these things.
It's not fun.
It's not fun.
It's not fun at all.
But I just have the doubt, my life, I just get up real early.
Okay, let's see. The lawn mowing is also done extremely early on Saturday and, or Sunday mornings. More than often, it's a Sunday morning at extreme six-thirty, seven o'clock in the morning. So I'd like to have that addressed maybe also. So now they won't only be doing the, the business, now they'll be doing the residential's, which is even more so. I'm telling you, they're there. I'll videotape them. I will videotape them, they're there on Sundays, Saturdays and Sundays. Also.
Before you go on, Jed, is that an allowable condition? Is that something the planning board can do anything about?
Typically during site plan review, no.
The zoning board can though.
Yeah, that's a zoning, and a use related item. Not necessarily a maintenance. I would suggest that perhaps property owners work with each other so that they can accommodate each other and not have those types of activities happening too early in the morning. So just neighbors working with neighbors.
The property owner here with us, don't we? Yes. And presumably he's listening.
I'm listening. I am listening. I heard this guy from JJC Development. I'll address that, I had no idea that they were going up on the weekends that early. I just texted him right now to say, you know, is that really when you're doing it?
Did he say yes?
He hasn't answered me.
Okay, does he do?
I'm sure he won't lie to me, I'm sure, if he, if he is the.
It's usually Saturdays or Sundays early in the morning.
Yeah, that's absurd.
More often sometimes Sundays.
Yeah, that's absurd, I'll, I'll address that.
Thank you, we would appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Also, you know, could we just once say no to T-Ticket? You know, T-Ticket has been, it's more than its share of crowding this. One point five miles, one point five miles from this development is the Faxon property. I mean, that's three hundred units. This is an extremely, I don't know if you've been out to the site, have you, any of you ever even been to that Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes, very definitely.
It's a very small site, you have to admit. It's a very small cramped area that this is gonna fill in extremely, it's gonna be overcrowded. But if you don't say no, then I guess we're gonna just have to, I don't see any foliage or anything up against the fences. I see no landscape, no, you're taking down fifty trees, they're gonna put in seventy, but that's only twenty extra trees compared to, you know? So what, what, what will they do along that fence? I mean, I don't want, I don't wanna look out and look at a chain link fence, just like you said, that, that, that development shouldn't have to do, Mr. Fox. You know, they, you looked out the back window of the church and you said, I wouldn't wanna look at it.
I was looking at, I was looking at it from another property, but.
From the. I mean, that is literally right out my kitchen window, where now I look at nothing but nice brush and natural trees, birds, animals. I'm gonna look, and I love children, but I don't wanna look out on the playground, and I don't wanna look out on a chain link fence.
Could I, could I comment on that? That I live in a neighborhood too, I think probably everybody here lives in a neighborhood. And what I don't wanna look at, I have to plant a tree. My neighbor's not gonna do it. That seems to be the way neighborhoods work.
Well, I won't be able to plant the trees.
In your own yard.
Maybe we could get them to do that.
I'd like to point out this is B-two zoning. It's the most intensive zoning we have in town. And it's been that way for fifty years, for, when was it created? I mean, this is the, B-two's, other than B-one, which is downtown, B-two is the most, it's our business zone. And it, and it, and we're not changing this owning, it's been that way for, when did we, when was the zoning done? Fifty nine, seven?
B-two district? I don't know, offhand.
But it's been a long, long time. And that's, you know, we, I, you live next to a business zone, that's what you get.
I could add about screening these. All these here are, what's shown on the legend on the plan is screening trees.
Screening trees, so.
Arborby's cedar or possibly even.
Where's my lot there, where's lot six?
Well, it's just, your, your lot is in here. Yeah, but there's no trees.
Yeah. Yeah, I would like to requ, you know, maybe some more trees, because.
Oh, her lot's way up high, six and eight?
These are.
Taking down fifty and only putting it, you know, you're only really adding twenty trees if you're taking down fifty and you're gonna plant seventy.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't get your name, your, your name is?
Lori Lopes.
Lori, Lori Lopes. Lori, I understand that, you know, you really wanna have an impact on what's gonna be your neighbor. And I think they're here and that they can hear you, but you've made your point, thank you.
I guess I've been dismissed.
Effectively, I hope, but not rudely.
No, no, not rudely, but dismissed more or less, that's okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to make a point?
No, but it's no point, we're dismissed, because.
That, that doesn't seem fair to me.
I'm sorry, I hope you forgive me for that, but it seemed fair to me. So, moving on. Any further comments?
My name's Danny Figurito, and I am lot eight. When you show these screening trees in that space, is that gonna be left space? Or is that gonna be all the way down from lot line to lot line? Right now, I look out, I see trees, I see Dunkin' Donuts somewhat, they did put some screening trees originally when Dunkin' Donuts was implemented, which is great. I don't have to look at it. And now I look out and I see four buildings when most neighbors look out and see one neighbor. I'd like the screening trees all the way. So, I'd like the screening trees all the way down, I'm glad they're putting the chain link fence, but I'd also like not to be looking at four buildings when currently, right now, I, all I see is woods.
Thank you.
While suggesting that zoning, that they, that protecting neighbors of a business zone property from seeing the business is not a protected zoning right, I think it's clear that this owner wants to be as benign as possible. And certainly, the landscaping, which we've already said was seventy-nine trees, and I've already said, Bunkers says he's putting in another screening tree, can be further enhanced. But the ability to do that and make this project work, it still has to be financially viable. And I think that Mr. Escander would probably prefer to spend money on that buffer to neighbors and more trees, and there's room to do it on this plan. You know, the lot coverage on this plan is only something like fourteen percent. This is not a small lot for the proposed use. And as you know, lot coverage by structures in the business zone can be forty percent, and total lot coverage seventy percent. We are so way below what's allowed. In any case, that gets back to the issue which we think is the most important, about not being required to spend a lot of money out in the town street. Thanks.
In the play area right now, is that treed as it is, as it sits now? Because that's, that abouts lot six A. So I'm just wondering if less trees were taken down and maybe the play area...
That, that's all pretty heavy growth rate.
We can't even see Sandwich Road in the summertime and in the spring and the summer. We see not, none of it.
We have a plan that shows the trees to be removed, so let's take a look at it.
I'm just wondering if, uh, what's there could be left and maybe the play area is shrunk a little bit.
Yeah, good idea.
So this is the play area in here, and yes, there are some trees in here.
How close to the property line are the, are the trees?
Just a second. This tree is about thirty-five feet from the property line.
Do you have to do any clearance there for the, for the septic system?
It's not in that location.
No, the septic system is out.
So you could leave that alone?
Oh, we do have leaching, that is for stormwater runoff.
Stormwater drainage is in that area.
I mean, we can reduce the size of the play area, it's really quite expansive, relatively. Like I said, we can put more trees in there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just wondering how many are, are there already along that property line, that's, that's all.
Well, they're shown on the first sheet, on the...
I mean, the significant trees are, but I mean, it's...
Those are the significant...
It's more than just, I mean, there could be some six-foot white pines or whatever, you know, I, I have no idea.
There, there are other smaller trees, arborvitae, or some redwoods and vines and things.
If, if you'd recommend that we reduce the size of the play area, we can probably a few of those trees.
Would, would that help the Jay Butters?
I think directly within the ten or fifteen feet from the property line, there's not really much sizable trees.
Yeah.
Kind of scrubby in there.
Yeah.
Which scrubby growth behind the, you know, it doesn't block, block the hue more than tall trees.
I know, we have a, a black chain link fence, uh, when we cut the dogs, and you don't see it, and now it's all overgrown with all kinds of stuff too, so I'm just wondering if there's any vegetation there that would kinda take root, or you, you plant some ivy, or, uh, something that would creep along the fence.
For the record, I would never plant ivy, because I'm worried that it's ivy.
Yeah, I know.
Um, there, there, there is stuff there in that area that's up against the property line that's outside the limit of the work, and that would probably too ravage the ivy and the trees.
Yeah.
Creates some amount of buffer, unless it was maintained, if it planted arborevidi or cedar trees there, they probably would, with the vines as they grow back in.
Yeah.
But...
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to seek a compromise.
Mm-hmm. I think it might be better to have a play area, but then also add, add a little more buffer planting along the edge, perhaps.
Okay.
Bob, could I show you a picture?
Um, just a moment, please, that's just not the way this operates. If you wish to speak...
Just come up to the podium.
Come to the podium, yeah.
May I? Thank you. Sorry, honey. Um, Bob, I have a picture of the back, if you'd like to just see what it looks like. I mean, you didn't go out to the site to look, did you?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can do that, too.
You, yeah, maybe, maybe if you could go out and look.
Yeah.
At, at all of you, that would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we've given you our reactions, and you'll be back, when would you suggest?
It depends on the applicant, I mean, we have availability on the twenty-eighth of It really depends on the engineering referral, I did not go through it, I didn't have time to go through it tediously. So I don't know whether or not the applicant plans to make revisions related to those comments, but it does sound like they might be making revisions, so it really is up to the applicant if they can meet that timeline.
Tom has already started addressing the engineering department's concern, he's, has the answers they want about some of the calculations. The one-way traffic flow has already been revised because of that. I think that it would be helpful to meet with the planning staff, get his input on what's the best way to do this. I think we're especially interested in working with the town about what needs to be done and what doesn't need to be done in the street. And so I think that we can do a lot, we're gonna address these things in the next couple weeks, and hopefully get a, um, decision from the planning board on the twenty-eighth.
Which would be good, and I think we'll all make a point of taking a look at the engineering recommendations...
Mm-hmm.
To see what we might be thinking about it, so that we're ready to react, uh, that night and make a decision.
Well, I just heard, uh, what I think is important, maybe if we focus more on buffers for the neighbors and less about building something in the street right away for a sidewalk we don't need, would make it more adaptable. And if town wants to come in, put a sidewalk on their own, our own property twenty years from now, because we need it, we could go ahead and do it. So I, I'd rather see the applicant put money into the buffer and plantings, and not a sidewalk that we don't need now, we might need it in the future, but we can always put it in the future if we want. We don't have to make this developer put a sidewalk to nowhere in, I'd rather see him put the buffer into the neighbor, that's my own personal opinion. So back off on some of the engineering requirements to make it perfect for the engineering and make it a little nicer for the neighbor, my suggestion.
Out of sense, there are more engineering requirements than that.
I know, there's a lot, but I'm just saying, we should take...
Right.
We may not need the ball, is what I'm saying.
No, I, I think hearing his concerns about feasibility was important.
I think we should spend it on buffer rather than engineering on town property.
That's a good balance.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, the twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
Thank you. I guess we're all done. I'm, I'm sorry if you felt you were cut off, I just felt, you know, we were beginning to repeat ourselves, so maybe we could move on.
So this is now coming up on the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Continue to the twenty-eighth. It is. Okay, we have, um, some more on our own agenda here. First up, the hundredth anniversary. Paul, did you wanna speak about that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. I did a lot of research on the history of the planning board, and it's a hundred years old last year, and I thought it'd be appropriate if this board vote to send a letter to the town manager suggesting a proclamation of that nature. We have not voted on it. I've drafted a, a letter, I've drafted proclamation, and the drafts, and we can discuss it, if you wanna move forward with that. You have some reservations, I have no problem with the letter, you're going to sign it. The proclamation has to be a little bit more than what's in that letter.
Well, yeah, but I didn't think it needed to be repeated in the letter.
Well, it wouldn't be in the letter necessarily.
Right. The letter kinda repeated the proclamation. But, anyway, well, did anyone else have a chance to take a look at what Paul's proposing and have a reaction to it? No? No.
I would suggest a second one, for example, where the people are named in the first town meeting, that's irrelevant, we can drop that, we can just say that they named twelve of, twelve members and not put all the names in, we can shorten those kinds of things, we can clean those things up. But I think some of it is worthwhile.
Paul and I first talked...
I actually found the names the most interesting, interesting part.
Interesting thing, right.
Because they're still family names around here.
I was surprised at that.
And I, I hear them all the time. So, and I, and I, I would like to see the names included, because that's, if you look at our old maps and everything, they, they didn't even have addresses back then, they just said the person's name on the house and the street. It is kind of like a old-fashioned way of looking at it, and I, I think we should stay with the names.
Well, if you wanna change the letter as you want, that's fine with me, if you wanna leave the proclamation the way it is or change it, that's fine too. But, uh, I'm not hearing real good support from this board to reinvent it.
You're talking about this one to, um...
Yeah.
The Red Shaw. I, I think it's fine.
I thought it was fine also.
I have nothing to, it's fine, I didn't say I was against it, Paul, I just like it the way it is.
Yeah, no.
No, I, Henry Herbert Smythe's was the pastor at the St. Barnabas, and he started the historical society. He mapped all the headstones at the old burying ground. The guy was a very significant player in the history of the town, and he's named right in this planning board.
Yeah.
Which I thought was interesting. So, I agree, I thought the names are really pretty cool. Lawrence Smythe Dillingham, me. It's the history of the town right there.
Yeah. Yeah, so...
Right, I, you and I talked about it, and it seemed okay to me at the time, although the letter bothered me, so if you don't mind simplifying the letter, um, fine, but usually proclamations, one, the hundredth anniversary was last year, this is now a different year, so we're a little bit late on this, which makes me uncomfortable, but it's, um, you know, mostly proclamations do something, they say, and therefore we put up a plaque, or therefore we honor somebody, or therefore, you know, it's just...
Well, I was asked to do the proclamation for the Falmouth Station.
Yeah.
And I wrote something very similar.
Ah, and did they do it?
And they took it verbatim, just signed it, gave it back to me.
Okay.
So, they're looking for something, if you wanna propose a proclamation, you gotta write it, so...
That's true.
If you wanna edit it, that's fine, I have no problem with that. But there's a lot of interesting information that came out of a lot of the reports that I was investigating.
Yeah. Okay, it looks as if it's a sense of the board that we'll go ahead with this, we'll edit the letter down a little bit and send the proclamation as it is, with the names. Because I agree with Jim, that is the best part.
Fine.
Okay, we'll do that.
Do we need a vote?
Um, do we have a motion?
I move that we, have you sign, send this letter.
Just a second, all in favor?
Tom, you've changed the letter, or you wanna change the letter.
I wanna change the letter.
Because it's repetitive, so we can't approve the letter.
We approved the proclamation.
Because it's a different version of the letter than you have, but proclamation...
He just moved in a nice second, and now you're arguing against it.
Yeah.
No, I'm not arguing against it at all. Charlotte suggested that we have a very simple letter. Proclamation is...
We just moved in second.
And they said, yes, that's what we're doing.
We agreed with you, Paul.
What's the letter say? We don't have the letter that you sent me.
We do not. It will be similar to this, but it's not gonna repeat the proclamation.
That's what I'm talking about, not, not that letter. The letter you wrote is what we have to do, and no one here has seen it except you and me.
They're gonna have to trust us.
Okay.
So whatever letter...
It isn't a trust issue.
So whatever letter you write is fine.
Right, just get it done.
And we'll use the proclamation as is and be done with it.
Yes.
Okay?
Right.
Okay. Thank God this only happens a hundred years.
So did we actually vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there, done, thank you. Okay, next up, we have, um, the Open Space and Recreation Plan Letter of Support. That is quite the plan.
It is.
It, that is amazing plan. How many of you had an, an actual chance to go on, uh, the town website and look at the plan? Not yet.
No, I just, I just read what was sent to us.
Okay, you go to the planning board page, which is very easy to find, and right on that front page, it says, Open Space Recre- and Recreation, Recreation Plan. It is a long plan, it's done by a very reputable, professional outfit, working with our planners and the rest of, other people in town, and it's filled with information and maps. So if you ever want a really good resource for where are all these overlay districts and what difference does it make, and get the background on it, it's all in this plan. It's really tremendously informative about the town, so it's worth looking at, and you wind up with all the information that you need. So good job, no problem in having a letter of support.
Okay.
Yeah.
I had, um, if you wanted to listen to the video that the consultants put together that, I, talks about what an open space plan is, I can play that. But if you'd like to just go right to the end of the meeting, that's fine too, I have no issue either way.
I think you sent us a printout of it.
I did.
Yeah.
So I sent you the slides.
Right.
Yep. So I think we're good.
Well, if you wanna go ahead and show it, I'm not sure everybody actually looked at it.
Okay.
Thank you for spending the time to watch the presentation. It will give you an overview of the town of Falmouth's effort to update its current Open Space and Recreation Plan, the OSRP, which was last updated in 2014. Feedback is focused on the seven-year action plan of the OSRP, but the town is interested in your comments on any pieces of the plan. Opportunities are both online and in-person. First, let's define what we're talking about in the OSRP. Open space can mean different things in different contexts. For the OSRP, open space refers to undeveloped land regardless of ownership that has important ecological functions, natural resources, or cultural resources that are worthy of conservation and protection. Examples include forests, farmland, fields, wetlands, and floodplains. The OSRP also focuses on outdoor recreational areas such as playgrounds, parks, athletic fields and courts, and bikeways. Why does the town have an OSRP? Well, having one helps it plan for the maintenance and enhancement of these resources so they can continue to provide environmental, economic, and social benefits to the community. They give us clean air and water, build resilience against the impacts of climate change, and provide space for neighbors to gather and for us to be active. The planning process helps us to understand where we are, where we wanna go, and how we wanna get there. Revisiting the plan allows us to measure success in meeting community needs and overcoming challenges. Finally, having an OSRP approved by the Massachusetts Division of Conservation Services keeps the town eligible for funding through that agency. It also positions the town in applying for other types of funding to implement the plan. It shows that projects have been vetted with the community and have support moving forward. DCS, the approving agency, outlines eleven required sections for OSRP's. These include a summary of data that give context to who lives in Falmouth, the businesses here, types of housing and development, municipal infrastructure such as water and wastewater systems, walking and biking networks, and stormwater management, among other information. systems, walking and biking networks, and stormwater management, among other information. Inventories of the town's environmental resources as well as open spaces and recreational resources are also included. There's a needs analysis that describes community needs, natural resource protection needs, and the needs of the town to maintain and operate its facilities. This includes a required ADA self-evaluation of sites under the jurisdiction of the Recreation Department and Conservation Commission, the transition plan to address structural barriers that were identified. The plan articulates a community vision along with goals and objectives to meet identified needs, and a seven-year action plan that outlines a roadmap for implementation. It includes who is responsible to move the action forward, timeframe for completion, and potential funding sources if needed. How did we get to the draft OSRP? Mid 2022, the town received a grant from the Cape Cod Commission to update its plan. It used that funding to review new available data reports, plans, and inventories that supported planning for open space and recreational resources. Town staff and key stakeholders were interviewed. In November, a virtual public workshop was held to ask about community needs. What was the town doing well? What could be better? And any new ideas the town should be considering as a plan for the next seven years? A community survey was also distributed at that time. At the end of December, a draft plan was written, but funding ran out. This past, past spring, the town received another grant to finish the plan and get more public input. It addressed any outstanding questions from their 2022 draft and conducted the required ADA self-evaluation on properties under the jurisdiction of the Recreation Department and Conservation Commission. Is now looking for public input on the draft plan to understand if it's headed in the right direction. Next steps will be to collect letters of support from the Falmouth Planning Board and Select Board, as well as the Cape Cod Commission before sending to DCS for approval. There are two ways to give your feedback on the draft OSRP.
So, I'll, I'll pause it there simply because this was the, as, as I explained, this was the presentation that we provided, or the, um, video that we provided at the last, um, public meeting. And I thought it was a really nice synopsis of what is an OSRP? Why is it important? And what was the timeline involved in all of this? One item I think I should clarify because, um, the presenter, um, didn't have all of the information correct. We didn't receive a second grant to finish the OSRP. That was a town meeting capital request that town meeting approved. So, it was a joint effort between grant funding and town meeting approved funding to get this plan to the finish line, and we are finally there. Uh, staff has spent a lot of time going through the inventory, myself included, um, to make sure that it's the best plan we can put forward, and we're looking for this letter of support so we can submit it to the state for their approval.
Well, it's an excellent plan, really.
I agree.
And I, I love that it has that much information in it.
It's a lot.
Gives everybody right up to date on what is there here.
Right.
Yeah.
So, we've received the approval letter from the Select Board. They just approved it, uh, earlier, uh, last week. Uh, we're working with the Cape Cod Commission to get their, that, that letter. Yours is the last letter. We also have a letter from the 300 Committee. And so, once all that's wrapped up, we'll look how it goes.
John?
Uh, the letter requests for thirty percent of the town. What's the percentage right now?
Figured you might ask. I'd have to consult the, the, the plan itself, but I don't remember offhand. I think it was in the high twenties. Roughly twenty-five to twenty-six was my recollection.
So, so, if we're twenty-six, which I've heard is twenty-six, why do we need this? For the other four percent, or?
Not necessarily.
This is a public statement. I'm, I'm trying to understand what the purpose of this is.
Right. So, it's, it's, um, a myriad of factors that you would need this, this type of plan. Uh, one, to make that statement, to say, we want to conserve more. Two, to improve the recreational sites that we currently have, to put in a plan in place so that we can maintain them and create new ones. And then, three, the most important one, in my opinion, is to allow for the town to, uh, be eligible for grant funding if there was an initiative to conserve future open space. So, an example of that is a joint effort between the 300 Committee and the town to conserve open space at the Benjamin Nice site, forty-eight Benjamin Nice, which will be a joint effort between not only the 300 Committee, but also the, um, Habitat for Humanity to create affordable housing and conserve open space. In order to get that grant, they need an updated open space plan. So, it's imperative that we get this to the state and approved so that we can receive that, I believe it was five hundred thousand dollar application, so that we can receive that money so that project can move forward. So, it's, it's a lot of different reasons why you would have an open space and recreation plan, similar to your local comprehensive plan.
I was going to say, it sounds like a local comprehensive plan requirement.
All about future planning.
Yeah.
Great question.
Other questions?
Yeah, I do. Uh, the final step is approval of the DEC, you know, DCS.
Correct.
Which apparently is Division of Conservation Services.
Yes.
How is that different from Department of Environment and Recreation?
I-
For example, Dylan Fernandez has gotten money from the Department of Environment and Recreation for Shiverick's Pond. And why is that different than what these, this group does? That's open space.
Right. So, what I do know is that the DCS is a division of the Executive Office of, of Environmental, um, Affairs, EEA. Um, I don't recall exactly where DER falls within the state, um, system. Uh, but I do know that DCS is the approving authority when it comes to these open space plans. So, I couldn't answer your question directly. I'd have to do some more research on, on those agencies, but I do know that DCS is the approving agency.
Appears to be a mobile app, that's all.
There likely is. State government can do that sometimes.
Does one provide funding and the other one doesn't?
I, I'd want to do some more research and get a better answer back to you.
We'll ask you next time.
I'm sure you will.
Okay. I just encourage you to take a look at the plan on the website. It's just really worth looking at. But I think, thank you, Jim, very much.
We had an excellent consulting firm, and they worked really well with us, and they were super patient and super flexible. So, I just want to say thank you to the Horsley Lake group.
And they have a great Instagram page.
Yes.
Yeah, they do. So, you can see who's there. Okay, the next, um, subject that we're going to discuss together, a short-term rental update. And I want to ask you a question first. Um, how many of you are familiar with the Land Court decision and the State Supreme Court decision on short-term rentals? Are you?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so that you know that the State Supreme Court said that short-term rentals are not allowable use-
Right.
-in residential areas, except as an accessory use.
Yeah.
Which is not well-defined.
Yeah.
Okay, so that that's, as a zoning thing, no. It's just a really interesting development. Where we wound up in Falmouth, we went to town meeting with, with our proposal. I think it was a lucky thing that it got turned down, um, because we would have made it legal when, in fact, it's not right now. And, but we did, uh, get left with the sense that we will now move forward and come before the April town meeting, maybe, with something else. Then again, maybe not. I went to, I asked for an appointment with Mike Renshaw to see what he was thinking along those lines about next steps. And he believes that the next step is, for the town, is enforcing what we have on the books now. And what we have on the books now is a requirement that anyone who's doing a short-term rental, any kind of rental, has to register with the town, and it's not being enforced well. So, that he wants to work on that, and that they are, uh, looking at, um, outsourcing it to a firm that specializes in, uh, identifying short-term rentals, getting them registered and getting them in line for a town, and sort of outsourcing the administration of short-term rental regulations or, or rules, or however that town moves forward. And there are several companies that do that. So, that's where Mr. Renshaw is. We have also heard, interesting, from, uh, the Select Board, the Chair of the Select Board, to say, uh, to invite, um, the Planning Board, me, to go there, and you, if you will, to their meeting on the twenty-seventh, because they will be discussing short-term rentals and would like some input on that. And I would suppose the topic is next steps. I'm hoping the next steps is to reconvene an expanded board and, uh, finish the conversation and come to some, um, a good recommendation that we could take back probably to the November town meeting on how we're going to handle short-term rentals. So, that's what I have on the update. Do you have anything?
When is that meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
When is that meeting?
How's that affect the air-
Twenty-seventh of this month.
How's it affect Airbnb?
Well, Airbnb works with whatever the town allows, and they'll enforce it for you too. They do. They require it. So, that for communities that require local licensing, you have to show them your proof.
There are a lot of those around.
There are. Well, there's a state registry, and as of December twelfth, I think I looked, at the State Registry for Short-Term Rentals, Falmouth had fifteen hundred seventy-four registered short-term rentals in mid-December.
Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred seventy-four, almost sixteen hundred.
Is that properties, fifteen hundred seventy-four properties?
Properties. Here in Falmouth. So, this is out of a total of twenty-one houses in town. Sixteen hundred, um, are offering short-term rentals of some sort. But there's almost no detail. You can't learn anything else really from it. But there are a lot of them, and it's assumed without knowing that there's many more that don't register with the state, even though they're supposed to. So, the other thing we know is that the Health Commissioner and the Health, um, Commissioner himself, they are not enthusiastic about administering a complicated short-term rental procedure. But lack of enthusiasm, that can always change. So, that's where we are. Um, Planning Department report.
Well, um, we're very excited to say that the bid opening has officially begun for the Shiverick's Pond fishing platform slash viewing platform.
Yeah.
Bids are, um, to be received by the town by February seventh. So, Paul is extremely excited. He's visited the office almost every day this week to thank me personally for all the hard work that he has put into this effort.
So, thank you, Paul.
No, we're very excited.
Thank you.
All kidding aside. Um, so, the Shiverick's Pond project is moving ahead, um, and we're very excited about that.
Let me add to that, if I will.
You, you, certainly.
The, uh, DPW Parks, Parks Department has been working all week in this weather. They're now only form platforms for the tables and benches, but they're also, uh, putting in the walkway as we speak, so they're moving forward.
Yes.
And I think the underlying thing is a very optimistic opening on, uh, our day of this year. So, if that happens, we'll all be very happy. Our day is, uh, April twenty-fifth.
Well, if you biting at their heels, it's taken them, what, eight years?
So...
The benchmark is ten years, so we're going to come in right underneath.
Right underneath. It'd be great.
But a big thank you to DPW, to Jeremiah Pearson, our tree warden, and Jim McLaughlin, our, our town engineer.
Yeah.
We couldn't do it without, without a big team.
And I can add, the, uh, the money for that is coming from the efforts of Dylan Fernandez from DER.
Mm-hmm.
So, using that money, not the money from the Community Preservation, uh, not Community Preservation, the DPC. So, uh, that's good news. The other thing we're trying to do is, Dillingham Road Extension going up to school was an issue we've argued for some time. The town is actually building that. They put the sidewalk in already if they haven't gone up there, and they wrapped the sidewalk all around to the back of the school, leading to the platform going to the, uh, pond that used to be where the selling club was.
It's coming around the back of the school, all the way to the park?
Oh, no, all the way to the platform, going down the existing platform.
Oh.
And I have suggested to, to, uh, DPW that they see if there's some way to extend the platform from that, the walkway from that point up to the platform for Shiverick's Pond.
Yeah.
And that would complete the walk-around, complete walk-around pond, which was the original concept of Shiverick's Pond Trail. So, there's a permit for that portion of it. Whether we can use that or not, we don't know.
Right.
But if not, is it possible to be getting additional funds from DE, DEP, DER?
You got it done.
And even further down the road, we'll have a shared use path along Catherine Lee Bates. We may have a connection to the lower end school, which may serve as an off-site parking site in the summer, so things are starting to coalesce.
Yeah, and that's really great.
Okay, what?
Just need stable government to make that happen.
Yes.
Is that your report?
It wasn't the end.
I got a couple of reports.
I bet you do.
When you finish with your report.
Very quickly, so, um, the Planning Department's also working on the town property analysis. So, for, as a refresher, um, we've been working very closely with the assessor's office to try and figure out what property do we own? What property can we dispose of for certain purposes, you know, be it affordable housing or other? Um, and so, we've done an analysis of properties over two acres. Those were a hundred and thirty-two or so properties. That went through to town meeting. You may have seen those properties get, um, approved by town meeting. So, we're working on the under two acres. We're really trying to get to the April town meeting. I'm not sure we're going to make it, but we're working very hard. And so, there's some candidates out there. They all happen to be, uh, previous subdivisions, not that this board approved, but, uh, boards back in the seventies, that created parks within the subdivision, and no one actually created the park. And under the, under the subdivision control law, within three years after that, if you don't actually create the, the park itself, it can, can be converted to a building lot. So, we're looking at those as potential sites for some more affordable housing in town. So, we're doing everything we can. It's a lot of deed research, so we've got to be very careful and make sure that Town Council, um, vets this thoroughly before we get to release those, so.
Who would own those building lots?
So, the town. So, actually, a lot of them, um, were tax titles. So, the developer created the subdivision. Either the HOA didn't pay the taxes or the developer didn't.
Okay, so they abandoned, all right, all right. I was wondering what happened to the ownership that was taken, taken for taxes.
Exactly. So, then we ended up owning it, and now we just have this lot in the middle of a subdivision that could be, uh, an affordable home for some, for a family. So, we're working very hard on that. That's, that's, um, you know, taken up a lot of time. Um, and then, of course, the last update is the, um, wayfinding plan. So, we just sent back our comments on the wayfinding plan to the Cape Cod Commission, and so, we have sort of a draft skeleton. The next phase will be about surveying the public related to design of signage, um, so that we can get a feel for, you know, what sort of colors, what sort of icons, placement, et cetera, what sort of things, um, are the public most interested in, in terms of wayfinding? So, that maybe, not necessarily this summer, but perhaps the next summer, we can have some signage in place, especially along the bike path, which directs traffic to the downtown area and gets people off the path into the downtown and back to the path and vice versa.
Well, you're open, bro.
Again, whole thing's coming together.
It is.
That's my report.
That's good. Um, Paul, you have a report.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. Several months ago, we talked about what impact forty-B had on, on the town. Katie Nelson from Neopark wrote a very nice article on January second about the status year review of the chapter forty-B housing. And Jim has put this in your package, so I suggest you read it. I think it's good reading. Secondly, I attended the Water Quality Management Joint Meeting with the, um, Health Department yesterday, Health Board yesterday, and I included this, a couple of slides here, and the one I want to mention is the last one, which really shows how complicated this whole process is, um, how long it's going to take, what they need to do. And one of the real concerns of the Water Quality Management Committee is, how can they be equitable? The people are putting in a 40B, a IA system like Tom here, and others who are beneficiary of that, and how would that, how's the town deal with those kinds of issues? So they're spending a lot of time on that, trying to figure out what to do with it. So this is an interesting chart and shows how complicated it really is. I think that's it.
And Paul, you mentioned that that meeting was recorded. So if anyone's interested, they can go to the FCTV webpage or the YouTube channel, and they can listen in on what this all means.
It's been on about three hours, so if they...
Don't discourage people, Paul.
For attending on our behalf, all right. Anyone else have any committee reports? No. In that case, announcements? No? Future agenda items?
Yep.
Paul?
I think when we were doing the accessory apartment bylaw, we kept it 40% because people did not want duplexes. I really think we need to explore allowing a 50% unit on lots, say, you know, pick a size, a large lot or an acre lot, or we have two acres zoning, we have one acre zoning. And we have big houses on those lots. And I think we should explore a possible additional bylaw that would allow people to take, say, a colonial, two-story colonial, and make a whole second-floor apartment out of the top floor and be able to rent it out. Because I, I just see this town as just getting overbuilt with units that people can't afford. And I think we need to do something with what we have already built on the ground on, in these neighborhoods. And I think people might be a little bit more amenable to it now than they would have been when we first did the accessory bylaw. But it's been done in other towns. I know I've done it for my brother up in Winthrop. Took a single-family home, made two apartments, two floors. It's been done forever. I think it's something that we need to do. And as long as the septic systems can handle the number of bedrooms, all those things would apply. You know, septic system, number of bedrooms, things like that would determine what somebody could do. But I think we need to expand on the accessory apartment bylaw.
Is there any agreement on that? Actually, it's hard to agree without more information. Are you thinking of exploring it?
I think we should have a discussion and maybe just toss out some ideas. Have a brainstorming session here at a meeting.
Okay, let's, and this is a future agenda item?
Yeah.
Right, so let's do that and see. And in the meantime, anyone on the board who wants to can try to search out, where are they allowing that kind of thing, and how does that work out? Right.
Town of Winthrop?
Yeah.
You said? I'll research that.
I'll give you some feedback as I've built a few things. I think that the more successful multiple-family things I've done in townhouse design, where you do vertical and horizontal over, is not as successful. It's a lot more troublesome.
What I'm talking about already...
To the owner or to the renters?
To the renters, to the people that live there, to... I have, well, I haven't built, but I did a development on 26 Thomas Lane where I did side-by-side, and people love it. When I built units on top of each other, I now have issues. Well, I live in one of them, and the person complains, I go to work at 5:30 in the morning, and they don't like that I get up early, and they want me to be quiet when I'm walking down the stairs on my way to work. So I don't know about this over/under type thing. It's not a good design, in my opinion.
That depends on, that depends on the building. And you can take a building and divide it in half. You can take a colonial and do two units side-by-side.
I like vertical rather than horizontal.
Yeah, and that would be up to that owner. But what I'm saying is, 50% of what already exists should be allowed to be used as opposed to just 40%. Because I know in the house I live in now, 40% wouldn't work. It just wouldn't work because of the way the house is designed. It's a colonial with a central stairway.
Right.
You know? If you have a central stairway like that, you can go off on two sides and have a floor. But that would depend on the owner. The important thing is 50% versus 40%.
Let's definitely have it on the agenda and try and get ourselves ready for the discussion. See what we can learn about it. I'm curious about how, where it has worked and what kind of communities have had it long enough so we can see a longer-term impact of such a change. The state, after all, just changed from our 700-foot accessory to a 900-square-foot accessory. So we're on the road, so let's talk about it, and that would be next time. Okay, any other agenda items that you want to discuss, general correspondence? I'm not aware of any.
The only one was the, well, it's technically the newspaper article, but that's already covered.
Yeah. Yeah. I think that we ought to hope that Pat gets better soon. Right, she's really got a bad flu.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. And I miss her. And our next meeting is the 28th, so...
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Done.